Good afternoon, everybody. We will call the order. The Salina City Commission meeting for August 11th, 2025. Call the order. We're going to start the meeting. Thank you. So all requests from staff of the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Onto roll call.
Mayor Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ivey.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here. All those who are able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, due to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to public hearings.
Item 3.1, Public Hearing and Adoption of the 2026 Budget, consists of three action items. Item 3.1A is to conduct the public hearing to consider the proposed 2026 budget. Item 3.1B is to consider ordinance number 25-11253, adopting and appropriating the 2026 annual budget. And item 3.1C will be to consider resolution number 25-8302, adopting the 2026 comprehensive fee schedule for the city of Salina.
Thank you. And we'll now open the hearing. And Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Per state statute, the governing body is required to hold a formal public hearing on the proposed budget for next year. And the purpose of that hearing is to answer and hear objections from taxpayers relating to the proposed budget. A notice was put on the city's website of this hearing on July 29th and in the Salina 311 on July 30th, 2025. On June 23rd, 2025, City Commission directed staff to prepare the 2026 budget using the revenue-neutral rate of 28.568 mils. This rate is a reduction of 8.849 mils from the city's current levy rate of 29.417. The final proposed budget, 2026 budget excluding transfers and cash reserves includes total expenditures of $155,959,033. This compared to the 2025 budget of $151,892,094. As a note, I just wanted to kind of emphasize here that it's important when you're comparing year-to-year budgets that you take out those transfers and those reserves because those dollars have some little quirks to them. For example, for inter-fund transfers, it's a revenue on one side and expense on another side. So that's one reason we don't put those in that number when we're doing comparison. And for cash reserves, from a budgetary standpoint, you can't spend the cash reserve in two years. So you have to kind of pull that number out of both of those to make those numbers kind of tie to each other. So you're comparing apples to apples more than anything else. The overall budget is about 2.7% higher than the adopted budget in 2025. The mil levy of 28.568 mils should produce property tax for the general fund in an amount of $12,36486 and for the bond and interest fund about $3.3 million. We did note that we did increase the general fund by one mil as compared to what the revenue-neutral rate was calculated in order to cover some operating costs in that fund. The comprehensive fee schedule was reviewed by City Commission during study sessions in June and July and has been provided by staff. Some of the most obvious, or some of the items in that is the sanitation monthly service fees being increased to $21.25 per month, which is about a 7.6% increase. Cart fees being increased $1 per month. The other notable increase is that water and wastewater consumption and monthly rate charges are being increased by 5%. From a fiscal perspective, the annual budget provides the plan and authorization of resources for the operation of the city. It gives us the authority to spend the city's money and not any more than what we've budgeted. So that's why it's important to set these numbers at a reasonable amount. So as you noted, there's three action items today. One, to conduct the public hearing. Two, to consider ordinance adopting the 2026 budget. And three, consider the resolution adopting the comprehensive fee schedules for 2026. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Pack?
Just one, I should know the answer. Are the fees for the recreational facilities like Bill Burke or East, not East Crawford, Berkeley Family, they're not included in these? Those are separate?
No, they have their separate ordinance or resolution that governs the cost and increases in those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I could, just real quick, just want to say thank you to Debbie Pack, Finance Director, Karina Reiner, our Deputy Finance Director, Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager, Natalie Fisher, our HR Director, and then all of the department heads that helped put this together. This process really starts in about April timeframe. We start looking at what revenues we think are going to come in. So a lot of work, a lot of effort. And really, the baseline for this budget, we said we wanted to allow for employee increases, so increases in pay. But we really held the line just about on everything else as far as operational costs. So this isn't, it's not a dramatic increase from prior years. I think in the overall budget, we're looking at about a $4 million increase, but that's pretty small out of $159,000, $160 million. So thank you to all the department heads who had work in putting this all together. And I think I've been with the city of Salina for just over six years, and I think this is just about as smooth as the budget process has gone in my tenure here. So appreciate department heads and City Commission and all the discussion that we've had to this point. So I wanted to put that out there.
I would add to that, that we've been working on this through study sessions since June 2nd. And it is a tireless process that it has to be done. And so none of this, in this budget, has surprised us that it's been a lot of work, a lot of information to digest.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll open it up to public comment. Please keep your comments within the three-minute time allotment, and let's try and be cordial, please, and thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and our Acting City Manager. I appreciate you having the public hearing. I will tell you, there's a group of people within the community that think the decision's probably already been made. I know there's been published a great-looking packet of all the information and contains a lot of information. I've tried to go through a lot of what you folks went through in the study session. I had pages of questions that I asked Mr. Wood, and he was very responsive with an answer, and that's very much appreciated. Also, very timely, that Salina 311 had the article over the weekend regarding how property taxes are broken out. It was kind of mind-boggling to me that the city is only 21% of that overall pie. Well, I think, I think, and there's a large portion of the city that would like our city to be more frugal. It's going to take every entity that's allowed to collect taxes to really make a difference in our overall tax bills. We have a lot of older population within our community. I don't have a problem paying my property tax bill, but I'll tell you, it's when I cringe when it's roughly $1,000 a month, and I think, how do I own my own home? Well, my property tax bill is $1,000 a month, and you add the $200, $300 insurance. Again, I can afford it. But younger people and our senior population, it's got to really stretch their budgets thin. Salina has come a long ways. Shoot, down in Santa Fe, there's a lot of times, it can be a weekday afternoon, and it's hard to find a parking spot. I know you all are good people, wanting the best for the community. In the overall, the organizational chart, it talks about the community, the Commissioners, the City Manager. I'm not always sure we do things in that right. I think you sincerely want the best for the community. I'm not sure if we listen enough to the community as a whole, and I guess we'll find out more on November 4th. I'm not running the call as anybody heartburned. As a matter of fact, going through or looking at what I've looked at over the last week or two, you guys digest a heck of a lot of information, and I know you process it the best you can. And just before I sign off, Mr. Wood, you told me that the city received a $22 million grant for the river renewal project? When you say a grant, does that mean that's money that we have in hand?
No, we don't have the money in hand. We will turn in receipts, and we'll receive that money as time goes by. So we do have some, we have received some payments, but we haven't received the full $22 million.
Well, what would you estimate as a percentage?
That we've received to date?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I'd have to look it that up.
I mean, unless you're living under a rock, we all know that a lot of things are happening over in Washington DC too as we speak. And it just seems to me that, I see them trying to claw money back, and that could happen too with portions of that grant. But my time's got to be up. I appreciate your guys' time. Again, not an easy job. Really don't want to take anybody's job. That will be up to the community come November 4th, and we'll see, I guess we'll see what the community as a whole, what they're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to respond that, you can go ahead and take your seat. I feel highly inappropriate to use this platform, this podium, as a campaign platform.
That was not my intent.
You mentioned November 4th, and you're running for the City Commission. Very inappropriate.
Anyone else, public comment?
John Blanchard, and I was hoping when you meant that everybody, John Blanchard, everybody was, would be cordial. I expect that you meant Commissioner Longbine as well as the rest of us. What I'd like to talk about is the population and demographics in particular. We all know that the budget comes up about three or four months prior to today's date. But what we do throughout the year tends to have more of an impact on not only this year's budget, but budgets 10, 15, 20 years down the road and more. I'd just like to point out a few demographics that I'd like you to think about. I'm going to give you 2017 audit numbers and 2026 budget numbers. You say, and I want to point out two in particular because they've gotten a lot of economic development subsidies in forms of tax abatements. And those are key. Those are tax abatements, they're generally 20 years. So their tax dollars, we never get to see until what you say 20 years later, and then we get a windfall. And year after year, we all keep waiting for that windfall, but our taxes keep going up. But Great Plains Manufacturing in 2017 had 1,100 employees. We gave all these tax abatements, and now according to your budget this year, we have 150 fewer employees for Great Plains at 950. Swan's Global in 2017 had 1,700 employees. We did a whole bunch of tax abatements with them. According to your budget this year, there are 900 employees. That's 800 fewer. You know, we've lost a couple of manufacturers since that time, since 2017. Two of the biggest ones are Eldorado and Phillips Lighting. So we've lost a whole lot. In 2012, our population was at about 48,900. It's the highest it's ever been. Right now, we're at just barely over 46,000. I think the lowest it's been since probably the 70s. I bring all this up because I just want you guys to try to be a little more judicious in when you hand out tax abatements. Our population's dropping, so there's fewer people to pay for everything else, all the new stuff and all the old stuff. And when you give tax abatements out to not only businesses, but the last two big residential subdivisions you've given, you've given them, they're not paying property taxes. They're paying them, but they're going back to the developer. So I just want you to have a little more foresight in what you're doing to budgets 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and then maybe we can have a community that we can all afford to live in. Thank you.
Back in 2021, the ending amount for the general fund was $9 million. At the end of 2024, it was $33 million. That was what was left over after all the expenses were done. And you can sit up there and pat yourselves on the back that you gave us a .849 mil levy reduction. I was told a couple of years ago, when the state took away the sales tax on food, that the city was not going to do it because they would have a loss of possibly $5 million. You have $33 million in reserve, and you would have even more than that if you hadn't taken $5 million out of the reserve fund and put it over into the no-touch fund for the river renewal project, besides the $3 million you took out of the sales tax. And I don't like the argument of saying, well, you know, our biggest revenue is the sales tax, but there's a lot of other people from the communities coming in and paying for that. I'm not buying that. If you're going to have an increase of $9 million from three years ago to $33 million now, why isn't the taxpayer getting some of this kickback? At least in the sales tax for the food. Everybody has to go to the grocery store. So you guys, you want that money there so that you can spend it. And sometimes I think, in my opinion, it's being spent foolishly. Let's take another look at this and see if we can't get this down to a reasonable amount for a rainy day scenario. Thank you.
I want to share just a little bit of information that might apply a little bit to some of the comments that have been made. I just wanted to point out that Saline County enjoys the second-highest poll factor in the state of Kansas, meaning that for our size, right now, we're collecting 34% more sales tax than our population would dictate. Second-highest in the state of Kansas, exceeded only by Johnson County in the Ken City area. So I think there's a lot of things, despite some of what you've heard this afternoon here, I think there's an awful lot that you Commissioners have done right that have led to Salina having some success in a lot of areas, and I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Young, Executive Director of Salina Rescue Mission and Salina Grace. And I just want to stand here and sincerely thank you each for your past, present, and current support. Your commitment to addressing homelessness in Salina has made a real difference here in our community. And I think as we go downtown, we're starting to see that difference have fruition. It took us to come together, to try some things new, and yes, even step up with some funding, but it's making a positive impact in the lives of those that we're helping. This past year, we helped 130 people get off the streets during the wintertime. We helped 50 people to get off the streets throughout the rest of the year into housing, shelter, and other programs to benefit them and help them continue to move forward. And I'm going to tell you, it's not that pat me on the back or pat Salina Grace on the back. It's all about the partnerships and the collaborations. When we pool our time, our resources, and our efforts together, we can make the greatest impact that we can. Working alone and working separately in our silos decreases our effectiveness. And so I just wanted to thank you all for being forward-thinking and looking at how we can partner together to provide economical, efficient solutions that address problems here across our whole community. So thank you for doing that, and I just wanted to share that. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Salem. In all honesty, I'm a Saline County resident. However, I'm here today representing First Presbyterian Church, which has a whole body of city residents. If you're here with me, would you raise your hands, so they kind of know? Okay. We felt the need to be here today because there was a fairly recent Salina 311 article by Joshua Barnett, which implied that the city may be concerned about the level of funding for Salina Grace. And it kind of referenced that some of those Salina Grace clients are not city of Salina residents. So we just wanted to address that and also to thank you because I know that you are continuing your support for Salina Grace. As Ted spoke about the resource center, I find it amazing. I don't know if you know this, but 40 to 80 people daily are at this Salina Grace, and they get meals, showers, clean clothes, computer access, and case management. Salina Grace coordinates with 17-plus local agencies for housing, healthcare, and jobs. This is a lifeline to a productive life for so many people that are struggling. And we had a couple of points we just wanted to share, which you may know, but we hope that the city knows also. There are probably some people not from Salina that are served by Salina Grace. But we have many non-residents who conduct their business here in Salina and the county income to Salina for employment. Trace just talked about the poll factor that we have in Salina. We are undoubtedly a regional hub, and we can't be happy to reap the benefits of being a regional hub without also taking the responsibility on the other side for helping others in the region succeed and provide grace and access to resources. That's our responsibility also, and I'm so happy to know that we do that. We also wanted the community to know that lunches and weekend bags are provided for those clients, and those lunches are provided by the faith community here in Salina. Lunches provided Monday through Friday, and weekend food bags are provided for those who live what we call rough on the streets. For example, through Salina Grace, each work week, First Presbyterian organizes and gives around 35 hours of volunteer preparation in order to provide food on Wednesdays. Every fifth week, we prepare and provide 30 weekend bags for individuals who are living rough on the street. We would guess honestly between the volunteer hours and our investment in food that over $50,000 a year comes from First Presbyterian Church. So the faith communities are doing their part, and we are certainly not the only ones. Sunrise Presbyterian and Christ Cathedral does a great deal also. We have a letter that I'm going to leave that kind of describes that in more detail, and it's signed by 60, almost 60 of First Presbyterians to thank you for your support for Salina Grace and just encourage you to continue. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
While I can appreciate what Salina Grace does, I just find it ironic that a church that is tax-free comes groveling to the feet of the taxpayer to foot the bill. We're a benevolent society. We're the most charitable nation on the face of the earth. We support and fund our charities of choice. Just wanted to throw that out there.
If there's nobody else, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make after some of the comments made from the public. We do have a strong poll factor, and a lot of the things we do up here, we make decisions hoping to bring individuals from outside of Salina into the community. I'm a big believer in sales tax versus property tax because I like somebody from out of county helping us to pave our roads and so on and so forth. Population, I can't argue with whether the population's going down or up. All I can tell you is we continue to build and build homes, and they continue to be filled. And we'll continue to do that, and our sales tax is increasing, which I think talks well about what's going on in the community. As far as tax abatements, yes, we've given some tax abatements out, but we talk about those at length as to why we do those and if it's beneficial to the community. Beck Seed just had a ribbon cutting this last week, and that was being taxed as ag ground. Now we have a multimillion-dollar property there that will go into the tax rolls in, I think, 10 years. Phillips Lighting closed down. Very fortunate that we had Kubota Great Plains step in the same day and say, we're going to take over that facility. And we gave them a tax abatement, but what a lot of people don't remember is Phillips, that building was in the county. So we annexed it into the county and then gave them a tax abatement. So we were not receiving taxes on that property to begin with. So I guess what people need to know is we sit up here and we go through the budget, department by department, almost line item by line item, and we talk about how it affects the taxpayer, and we talk about Salina Grace. And if we didn't have Salina Grace, what would that do to the city of Salina? Would those people fall onto our back and we'd have to do something as a taxpayer? So those are the kind of discussions we have. I think I have two ladies out here that have probably sat through most of the budgeting process. Other than that, all of a sudden, we have people here that are, you know, don't know how we got here. You know, it's not, we don't hide it. We do it in study session, and it's open to everybody, and we all have emails, and if there's something you don't like, you're more than welcome to email us. I'm guessing everyone in this room has a project that they want funded, and I'm guessing everyone in this room has a project or item they'd like to remove from the budget. And we understand that, so we make hard decisions. We're fortunate that we do have a fairly substantial reserve balance. Go out and read what Wichita's doing right now, or Manhattan, or Topeka. There are communities out there that are struggling because of where their general reserve balance is. This commission, along with the commission before us, made a lot of what I consider good decisions that have got us where we're at now. So again, we don't take this lightly. This commission works hard, and I think our budget is balanced, and I think we've done a good job of getting where we needed to be. And what other people need to look at is, we spend millions of dollars every year on roads, on upgrading sewer, water. So we're taking care of the basics too, and having that reserve balance allows us to even do that more than we have. Martha will tell you, there's a lot of times we'd like to do more, we just can't find the people to do it. So that's my two cents worth.
I'll follow up to that. Go ahead, Mayor. Absolutely.
Over 70% of our budget is wages and benefits. And this past couple of years, we passed, approved a pay plan to bring our wage rates up to be competitive with other business and industry. And that's been successful in retaining and recruiting employees, and we're getting close to full staffed across the board, aren't we? Yeah, utilities is, yeah. I saw your sign, "Looking for Help." That's a tough one. So, yeah, it's not like all this budget's going to pet projects and unnecessary things. It's going to the people who make this city operate and run.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor Lenkowitz, I move we approve ordinance number 25-11253, adopting and appropriating the 2026 annual budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 25-11253, adopting and appropriating the 2026 annual budget. And roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Linkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Linkowitz, I move, we approve resolution number twenty-five dash eighty-three-oh-two, adopting the 2026 Contra Hemsy Fee Schedule for the City of Salina.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of resolution number twenty-five dash eight-three-zero-two, adopting the 2026 Comprehensive Fee Schedule for the City of Salina, Kansas. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Item four point one, consider approval of the minutes of the July twenty-eighth, 2025 regular meeting. Item four point two, consider approval of the minutes of the July thirtieth, 2025 special meeting. Item four point three, consider awarding the bid for project number two-five-zero-two-one, Phase Four A of concrete improvements at various city parks to Ponton Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. And item four point four, consider authorizing the interim city manager to execute an agreement with Lochner for engineering design services related to road improvements on East Crawford and the pedestrian bridge on the Brookwood Trail.
Thank you. Is there any item the commissioner would like removed from the consent agenda? Is there a member of the public that would like to comment on any item from the consent With that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Linkowitz, I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero. On to administration. Five point one.
Item five point one, consider approval of ordinance number two-five dash one-one-two-five-five, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Thank you. Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Throughout the year, notices are mailed to property owners notifying them that they are in violation of city codes pertaining to property maintenance. If the situation is not resolved, and the property owner does not do it, the city will go out and abate that property on its own, at its own cost, after the notification. If we do that, then we send the bill to the property owner for that abatement and give them an opportunity to reimburse us for that payment. If those property owners do not pay the city back for that abatement, then that is levied against, as a special assessment with the county clerk against the property. Since the last abatement, which was fall of this time last year, the amount billed for property abatements is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. That's three-hundred-and-ninety-eight violations across three-hundred-and-sixteen unique properties. That, a little over seventy-five thousand dollars has been paid. Attached to the staff report, we've provided you a list of the other abatements that were not paid, and thus will be assessed on property taxes that will go out in the fall. The options for city commission on this action is to approve the ordinance, to levy the special assessments, postpone the consideration, or vote to deny the ordinance, which leaves the cost of the property of the abatements to the city's responsibility. I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pack?
Just one, it really doesn't have much to do with the substantive action we're gonna take now, but is there any pattern that anyone in your office has noticed over the past couple of years that lets you predict which properties are gonna fall?
We do have, we do have a list, that was one of the questions I asked staff to look at, is we do have a list of repeat unpaid properties, and there's about one, three, six, nine, twelve of those on that list. So there is some repetitiveness in that, in those specific properties.
I mean, I'll make up two examples, they probably aren't one. Let's say, new homeowners, elderly homeowners, is there any group that seems particularly at risk for ending up on this list?
I'm not sure that we track that data. Development Services or Building Services may track that data, but it's something that we could certainly look at to see.
As an example, I mean, if we have a lot of senior citizens who can't cut the grass, we should still have some scouts in town and other folks looking, got lawnmowers in their trucks who could volunteer to help take care of this.
Right.
So is this number, three-hundred-and-sixteen unique properties, is that about average, or is that increasing?
I don't, I don't have that statistic, to tell you the truth. It seems about the same, not unusual.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, Commissioner Davis' comments, there are several groups in Salina, in the area, willing to serve, and we're fortunate and blessed to have that.
And I know our code enforcement officers try to work with people when they send letters, if they call in and they say, "I can't do it, I'm elderly," or something's going on. I know that they try to help them get those resources, and I'm not sure whether we have a list or something like that, but that might be something we could provide.
Yeah, to connect people with resources.
Mm-hmm.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? And I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Linkowitz, I move, we approve ordinance number two-five dash one-one-two-five-five, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement and nuisances.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number twenty-five dash one-one-two-five-five, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Linkowitz?
Aye. Brings us to five point two.
Item five point two, review and approve the agreement with Deal Enterprises, Inc., the contractor, for the debris removal from the Smoky Hill River in Bill Burke Park.
Thank you. Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. At the last city commission meeting, the city commission authorized the interim city manager to execute the agreement with Deal Enterprises for the debris removal at the Smoky Hill River. At that time, the city commission asked to take a look at the agreement and the bids for the project. So, that's what I've supplied you with today in your staff report. The agreement was developed from a basic agreement template that's prepared by our legal counsel. And basically, the agreement's template exhibits A, B, and C are very specific to this project, and G and H are for the permits that were required for the project, and the others insurance and bonds that are typical of our agreements. And so, today, I'm just gonna focus on the project-specific exhibits, because that's probably of most interest to you. And Exhibit A defines the responsibilities of the contractor and the city. And in general, the contractors to furnish all the labor, supervision, equipment, materials, services to perform the work that's been described. And the exhibit goes into, A goes into great detail on what the city's gonna provide and what the contractor's gonna provide. In general, the contractor is placing the equipment pad, removing it, and stockpiling it for the city, removing the debris, hauling debris and sediment to the wastewater plant, and then properly disposing or burning it, and providing safety barriers for the public, and then cleaning their area up. There's a total of fourteen items, but that's kind of the highlight. And then for the city, we're providing warning signs at the Crawford Street interests to Bill Burke to make it safer there for the traveling public. We'll identify the route, and repair of the sidewalks, parking lot, grassy areas and grounds will be by the city unless it's negligence of the contractor. We'll provide a photograph of the debris pile at the beginning of the project so that we can compare that to the previous June event, and then the two July storm events, and then the city will remove the rock pile from Bill Burke and use that for city projects. And probably what's most important is that this is set up on a timeframe of doing four weeks' worth of work, and you divide, define the equipment and the labor that would be necessary in the exhibit. And basically, no work can be accomplished over and above the amount that was agreed upon without city commission action. At the end of the four-week period, city staff will take a look at where we're at with the project, will decide if we really got the original debris pile removed, and then work towards an agreement or change order to move forward, or possibly, we could go back out and procure the rest of the work if we so chose to. So, the bid was based on six workers and a long list of equipment, and forty hours a week for four weeks is the timeframe. And a city representative will coordinate every day with the contractor and be paying attention to what's done, and they'll provide us with weekly reports. So, a lot of supervision to make sure we stay on top of what's getting removed and be aware of any conditions that could be a changing condition we didn't think about. And again, no additional costs or time can occur without city commission approval. The timeframe that we're looking at right now is to look at a notice to proceed after today or today. The project will be complete by October sixth. The thought is, the debris removal will take the four weeks, and that will occur between September eighth and October sixth. It's depending upon rain events, storm events, things that are out of our control, and then ultimately, the pile of debris will be burned prior to December thirty-first of this year. Exhibit C talks about the basis of payment, which was covered before with an amount not to exceed a four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, three-fifty-one, and that included a ten-percent contingency over the cost estimate. And as they turn in their requests, they have to turn in materials, labor, and all of the items that we're billing for, so we'll be tracking that on a weekly basis and know where we stand each week as we move through the project. Exhibit G and H basically are the two permits. They add up the bulk of the paperwork that you got to read, so they're quite lengthy with the requirements. Legal counsel and city staff have reviewed the agreement, which is our standard practice. And then, Mr. Deal reviewed the agreement last week and is in agreement with the document as it's published together. And the quotes were included for you to take a look at. Physical note remains the same as last time. We'll be looking at forty-seven thousand dollars from the contingency fund and the remaining from the general fund. Offer up three options. One is to approve the agreement, approve the agreement with some amendments, or do not approve the agreement. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Staff recommends option one, and Mr. Deal was not able to be here today, so that's why we put in the extra effort last week to make sure he's seen everything that's in here. So.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Tasker?
Yeah, just a few. After I read it and reread it and reread it, I think it finally hit it. This really is not contracting to remove the whole pile. This is, it's like hiring kids to, we know how many workers we need, how much work each worker's supposed to be able to do, so we're hiring labor and equipment for four weeks.
Yeah, and for the, the original pile was what this is based on, not the two events in July.
Right, based on the estimate of what it should take. Three questions. One, I don't think this would happen, but let's just say the city said, you know, you guys are not really working that fast or that hard. Is there a way to gauge if the work is being done as feverishly or expeditiously as we anticipate? Or is there, does the city have like a project manager who comes and observes every once in a while?
I believe that person will probably be me tracking those, since I've been involved from the beginning and have spent the time talking to the different contractors about the effort, and we'll have a pretty good feel of how many they have talked about working each day and how they'll be doing their project and trucks and equipment. And it'll be a daily timeframe to check in with them and see how things are going, but we will be tracking it, and then again, we'll get a report every week, so we'll have a pretty good idea of whether things are going well or not. And the idea of the photograph in advance is to have something to track with and compare to.
And then, the last two questions are flip sides of the same coin. If after the four weeks, take another picture, whoa, there's a lot more still here, we would then come back, and at that point, it would be negotiating with the same contractor as opposed to opening it up for entirely new?
That would be the hope, is number one, would be able to go back and work with the contractor that's put the rock pile in and be able to continue on.
Right.
But, we'll have to evaluate the situation and what's left after the four weeks of timeframe to see if we really did get pile number one, or where we stand.
I know in Los Angeles, after the Northridge earthquake, the freeways had to be rebuilt. And if I remember correctly, the contractor got a million-dollar-a-day bonus for every day ahead of the contract that they finished the project. We don't have any clauses like that in this contract, what I saw, so let's just say the work was done in two and a half weeks. Is then the amount that Deal receives just, is just for two and a half weeks' worth of work, or is there any incentive built into our contract?
Exhibit C basically pays them for all of the invoices, the materials they used and the man-hours that they expend. So, the goal would be, and what we've talked about, is if they get to that point and do what you've described, then we continue on to just keep going until we spend all the money out and see where we're at with the pile. So, and from the beginning, it's always been, this is not a normal project where you can really put your arms around it. You don't know what you can't see. So, try to make the best guess, and when you look at the bids, they're all in the same amount of timeframe and effort. They may have tallied their costs in dollars different, but at the end of the time thing, timeframe, it's three or four weeks and certain amount of effort to get to that point. So, I like your idea of being further along in two and a half weeks, so, you know, if you have a way to.
It's a very efficient way of getting work done quickly, yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Tasker, I think from conversations we had, just so the public knows, I believe all the other bidders kind of had that open-end bid also, not knowing what's there.
They did.
I mean, so, it's kind of like, we don't know what we don't know, and I think all the bids kind of came in that way when you analyzed them, is that correct?
That's correct, and in the same timeframe, give or take, and dollars not greatly different, but some may have more rocks, some may have more labor, it's how they broke them down, but we didn't specify quantities or means or methods to do the job. We allowed them to develop their concept and scheme for doing the work.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I know, that's a good question. I'm done.
Okay. One of the questions I had is, one of the bids they have is for removal of the rock pad for staging of equipment, and then if needed, can be left for future log jams. What's your thought process on that?
That's not a possible choice, because as you read through DWR and the U.S. Army Corps...
Number thirteen says you have to remove everything entirely?
Yes.
Okay. I was hoping that that, it makes sense, if we think that's a potential for that to happen again, to leave that there, but item thirteen, and that's why I was asking, temporary fill must be removed in their entirety.
Yes, that's a requirement, and I'm not sure if we had those high volumes of water that the smaller rock and that would not move on downstream, based on what we've seen in the past.
Trying to save us some money and hopefully plan for the future if that ever happens again.
The best I could do was get, to keep the rock for city's uses. I thought that was my, my little bit of a favor there.
Well, I think if the contractor can perform this work and get it knocked out in two and a half weeks, that'll probably be determined, he'll have incentive, he can make money that way, make a profit.
Typically, the faster they get the work done and it doesn't drag on, it's better for them also, because then they can get on to the next job in a while or so, but...
I had a citizen ask me what they were gonna do with the rock pile, the gravel, and I'm glad you said that we're gonna keep it and use it for projects, because I told him we're gonna dump it in his driveway.
You'll have to fight Mr. Co-Watch for it, because he's got plans.
So, we had Bill Burke, the entire facility closed down for a couple of weeks there. Will, you know, it was a blessing that baseball was over, essentially. Will it, you know, it was a blessing that baseball was over essentially. But fall ball will be starting. Will we be closing the park or will it be accessible? Is that to be determined?
The intention is it will be accessible and we have a route that we've determined, they'll stay off the parking lot back behind the maintenance building and they'll use the furthest east park or furthest west parking row for their route in and out. We'll be limiting where they can travel and barricade that so that it's, the majority of the park, we can still keep open.
Okay, well, the baseball community will be happy with that.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
When you, we're talking about the removal of the rock at the end, did you say the city was doing that or they're doing the removal?
The contractor's doing the removal of the rock from the river channel and putting it in the stockpile. And then, the city.
Oh, then you're taking it from there.
Yeah, and if everything could work out, Mr. Coatch would like for them to just put it in his truck and he could haul it away. So, he's, he's working every angle he can to get the rock.
And then, Dr. Davis brought up, you know, who would be monitoring how fast they would be working? Is there any enforcement if they are not working fast or at a diligent pace?
We'll be talking with them to try to move them. But it's, it's in their best interest to get the job done. It's a community project. There's a lot of public interest in it. I think as a contractor, they have a little self-pride in trying to get their job done as they promised and what they said. And typically, they like to get done quicker and move on to the next project and keep moving. So, as far as discussion, I think we took out the portion in the agreement to where they could terminate with us, but I think we still have some ability to do things that we need to. But if we did that, it'd be better to have a good stern conversation and get on the same track than to go back to bid and start over again. Because we went out for requests for proposals or qualifications and back to the drawing board, it'd be another length of time. And typically, someone doing that work would maybe be an eight to 10% fee, which would be additional dollars. So, I'm, I'm very thoughtful to the idea of working together and making this be a success for that contractor and our community.
I kind of thought about putting up a couple of cameras to monitor the progress and then put together a time lapse when it's all done.
That would be interesting.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Ben Whittlesalina, Ms. Tasker said the two famous words, "change order." Got to love it. Any contractor that's worked in this community before knows that all they have to do after their bid, doesn't come in and goes way over, they go to the city and cry the blues, enters a change order. I have been to five years' worth of these meetings and you guys have done change order after change order after change order after change order, just going by what the contractor If you do that, here's what they do. And I know this from being in 45 years of the trade. Any contractor that works for the city is going to bring in a low bid because he knows that more than likely, 70, 75% of the time, he's going to get more money than what his bid was. And he's going to come in a lot higher than, say, the highest bidder was. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think the highest bidder was like $800,000. And I have a feeling before this is over with, that's probably what it's going to be. So, somebody like the low bidder can come in and say, yeah, I'll do it for this, knowing that down the road, you're going to have change orders and you're going to get it. There was a representative here last week that had the second lowest bid. And he was saying that the, the amount of debris that's going to be taken out of there that needed to be hauled off was much higher than what the city engineer said it was going to be. He also said that he was willing and was able to get a floating crane from Texas and he could save $10,000 off of his bid if he was to get it. You guys didn't even listen to him. You already had it in your mind that you were going to go with the lowest bid of Deal Construction. And Deal has done work in this town. Some of it good, some of it I don't know, questionable. But he knows, Deal knows that if he comes in with a low bid, more than likely, he's going to get a lot more money down the road with the change order. So, hopefully, you can prove me wrong again. I've told you numbers on the river renewal project before and I'm getting, we're getting close to what I told you five years ago, what this is going to cost. And I have a feeling this river renewal thing is going to, this log jam thing is going to be the same kind of story, $800,000 or more before it's over with. And we'll just have to keep track of how many change orders that you guys give him.
Toby Johnson, Salina. And I was going to direct these at you. Is the original pile marked? Do we have a paint line or for the? And then, two, is the investigation by the outside agency wrapped up on Deal for the dumping issues I keep hearing about?
I can work on the first one. The, is it marked with a line? What we have is aerial photographs from, taken from above with the first log jam in June. And then, we have aerial photographs that were taken during the July events, which there was two. And we're going to take another aerial photograph. So, we can overlay those over each other and we get a pretty good idea of where those points are. Mr. Gansen Mueller in GIS has done some of that already, you've seen in the, your packet that you have. And we've looked at that for the next phase, but it was a distorted angle, so we need a straight-down photo, which I've asked the fire department for some help. So, photographs of what's there, what was there and what's there is the way we're going to keep track of what's there, if that helps.
And just to clarify, all the bidders submitted their bid with the intent of moving the original pile.
Yes.
So, they all had the opportunity to submit their bids. And we just don't typically negotiate at the podium during a city commission meeting. The bidders all had the same opportunity to provide a bid based on removal of the pile that was there. They did that. What was said at the last meeting didn't necessarily represent what was in the bid packets. So, you know, for us, we have to review what's submitted at the time and go with what we feel like is the best, the best bid. And that's what we recommended and what the city commission went with, so.
Thank you. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Chad Farver, Salina. I've heard a couple of times the original pile. Do we know a percentage of what the original pile is to where we are today? I'm assuming it wouldn't be 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 for the three events. But you, you want me to ask? I have two questions, so I'll, I'll let her answer after that. The other part of it is the open-ended part, which does concern me as a taxpayer since I'm kind of the one paying for this thing. Are we planning to, as Ms. Tasker mentioned, go phase by phase to completely remove this? Or is there going to be some left in there? Or how, how do we move forward from there? And, and the last thing I wanted to mention is there's been a lot of washout along the banks of, of the river, part of that tree line, specifically at Bill Burke where I walk my dog, honestly. You see, part of the tree line has been washed out, part of the viewing area where the sidewalk was down there with the guardrails. One of the guardrails is actually in the river itself now. Are there plans to replace that, to refinish that? Or is this just simply, we're removing the problem and then we'll have to go to another phase of beautifying that area again? This is, the river is part of our city, part of our community, and I think it's worthwhile to make it look good. There's a group out there called Friends of the River. I don't know if, if the city has contacted them to see if they would be willing to throw into the pot, you know, to beautify the river a little bit? Or if they're just simply focused on the, the overall picture. But I just don't know how, where we are as far as the pile. The thing is massive. I don't know if you guys have been down there or not, but it's, it's a pretty big mess. And so, I don't think two and a half weeks is going to happen for the whole thing. I'd love for it to happen, but just, I don't, I don't know where we are in phasing.
That's a lot, that's a lot of questions. I'll see if I, you might have to reiterate one or two. But as far as phasing, the first initial plan, as Mr. Woods indicated, is to get rid of the original log jam. And then, to move on to the second pile and determine what's left after our first effort. I mentioned asking the fire department to do some drone work or photos. I've asked them to look at the damage along the areas and snapshots of that. I've been talking with Michelle Wise, emergency management, to see if this could be compounded with the June event and talking about the other areas that we have, similar to what he described, the banks that are washed away and areas that have sloughed off, that those could be covered and still. I think there's a little more hope because there was some other damage in the week of the 17th through the 22nd throughout the rest of the state that we might be able to get up to disaster funding, but don't know. Still trying to keep that, at least that thread connected if there is something available. So, that's the phase. Haven't even totally evaluated all of the other damage that's done and what it takes to put that back. That's the idea of getting the drone footage so we can start putting those pieces back together. But we will have to do some rework to our water intake structure to bring it back to being safe and useful as it was before. Anymore? Did I kind of catch most of them?
Do you have a percentage, is the, are the other two piles bigger than the first event or?
The first event, and you, you can't hold me totally to this because the view that I was using to do the work with was tilted, so I couldn't get a good, straight-down photo. And that's what I need. But the first event, we were looking at somewhere around 350 foot long. Now, maybe 600 foot long. But it's kind of tails out at the end and there's loose spots in some places. So, that's a, a rough guesstimate. I can't tell because of the angle of the camera. Have a better shot at that when they provide me the info to be able to tally as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and I think this reiterates one of the comments I made earlier. And when we talk about having the reserve balance as we do, eight years ago, we had $3.5 million in general reserve balance. This kind of event becomes a real concern and we would be talking about a mill levy increase and increase in property taxes. The fact that the decisions that the city has made allows us to take care of a problem like this without being a concern to our general reserve balance. So, again, we're fortunate to be in the financial situation we are. We don't like spending the money.
No.
We're all taxpayers. You know, I love when somebody says, well, you're going to spend other people's money. Well, in case you want to know, I pay taxes too.
And, and change orders are a definite effort that we spend time on and it's a hard review to get through all of that, but it's not a given.
Yeah. And talking about taking the lowest bid versus the highest, well, I, I don't think the gentleman was listening when we said all of them had an open end. So, if I take the $800,000, that could be a million too. So, why wouldn't I take the low bid and might get to eight? So, you know, you can second-guess yourself all day. But again, we have, we listen to staff. We have good staff to analyze this. And I think we've taken the bid that we think will hopefully be the least expensive.
This is an unusual project with many unknown factors. Can't see what you can't see and don't know what you don't know. But our job is to manage it and do the best we can for our community.
Thank you.
And as with any natural disaster, I anticipate a lot of restoration is going to be required, whether it be the roads or the riverbank or.
Anyone else wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Linkiewicz, I move, we approve the agreement with Deal Enterprises, Inc. for the debris removal from the Smoky Hill River in Bill Burke Park in the amount not to exceed $452,351. Second?
We have a motion and a second for approval of the agreement with Deal Enterprises, Incorporated, for the debris removal from the Smoky Hill River in Bill Burke Park in the amount not to exceed $452,351. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass is five to zero. And on to development business, 6.1.
Item 6.1, consider the acceptance of an access easement vacation for the Frazier Brothers Edition, a replat of the East Gardens Edition.
All right, we're getting situated here. So, some background and context of the Frazier Brothers Edition. This is an addition that was proposed by applicants Mike and Mark Frazier, they're brothers, hence the Brothers Edition name. The location of the replat is on the south side of York, just a little bit to the west of Ohio Street. So, if you're familiar with Ohio and York, we are a little bit to the west of that location. The replat is part of the, what was originally the East Gardens Edition, which is platted in 1913. That plat consisted of 30 separate lots. Many of those lots have been replatted in the 1970s as part of the North Industrial Park urban renewal project that took place. However, these particularly, particular properties were not. And so, what we have is we have a parcel with three different buildings on it. And you can see on the picture, there's, there's three existing buildings and some vacant area back to the south behind the buildings. And what the Frazier Brothers would like to do is create separate zoning lots for each of the three buildings and then a fourth lot for a vacant developable piece to be developed later. And so, this is what the plat looks like. You have Lot 1, which is associated with 1018 York. You have Lot 2, which is associated with 1012 York. And Lot 3, which is associated with 1002 York. And then, you have a vacant lot to the south, which is Lot 4. All four of these lots would have access to public streets with the first three lots having access off of York and Lot 4 having access off of Francis Avenue. This is important because there is currently an existing 24-foot-wide access easement along the east edge of Lot 1. And that is the current nature of our request. The applicants are proposing to have that easement vacated. And so, that is why we're meeting here today. Looking at utilities, there is a six-inch water line to the north of the property in York. There's also a six-inch water line to the east in Francis. And there is an eight-inch wide sewer, sanitary sewer line in York and an eight-inch sanitary sewer line in Francis. This is important because there are no utility easements existing or proposed for the property. So, the only easement that we have in question is the 24-foot access easement. So, there, to summarize, there are no existing easements on the property. There are none being proposed and none are needed. And the only request that we have associated with right-of-way or easements for this property is a vacation of the 24-foot-wide access easement along the east edge of Lot 1. And so, the planning commission met on July 15th and they voted 8-0 to approve the plat. And what that means is the city commission has these three options. One, you could concur with the actions of the planning commission and accept the vacation of the existing 24-foot-wide access easement and authorize the mayor to sign the plat of the Frazier Brothers Edition on behalf of the city. Number two, you could postpone consideration to a specified date and time and provide staff with direction regarding additional information that the city commission would like to see. Number three, you could decline to accept the easement vacation and return this plat to the planning commission stating reasons for not wishing to accept the proposed easement vacation. And with that, staff will take any questions you might have.
Thank you.
I'll leave the plat up with the easement vacation in case there's conversation that's needed.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hers? Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? And I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Linkiewicz, I move, we concur with the action of the planning commission and accept the vacation of the existing 24-foot-wide access easement and authorize the mayor to sign the plat of the Frazier Brothers Edition on behalf of the city.
Second? We have a motion and a second to concur with the action of the planning commission and.
and accept the vacation of the existing 24-foot wide easement and authorize the mayor to sign the plat of the Frazier Brothers Edition on behalf of the city. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Passes five to zero. On to other business. Does any commissioner have other business they wish to discuss?
Just, nothing, life or death. Well, one of them maybe. And notice, driving through the street, a lot of us are in the habit of blowing grass cuttings and sweeping grass cuttings into the gutters. And as we get our river ready, those drains eventually would end up in the river. Some are just plain trash receptacle. So at some point, we need to start changing our mindset so that we put that stuff in the trash can or where else you want to put the, the live material so that we're not washing everything down towards the river. And we have plans or ways to filter some of that stuff, but the less that we have going down, the better. And I doubt these people are watching this show or their social life really needs an upgrade. But on a flight here from Denver to Salina late last night, I got a new appreciation for some Weather Channel terms such as updraft, downdraft, turbulence. It was not fun, but, but the United Airlines crew, that flight 5107, I'm going to send a letter to their supervisors. But very calm, very professional. I'm just hoping that they were trained at K-State Salina. But we were just so happy to get off the plane. We didn't have time to talk to them and ask them where they flew. But it's still nice to see all those flights, the planes here at night. And again, that's force out, you know, money that we had to put out to help get that service here. But it's, it is paying off. But it'll make you wonder sometimes, boy, you know, we could have just run in a car and driven and skipped this. But any landing that you can walk away from is a good one. So wherever the guys are, thank you. Appreciate it.
It was alluded to earlier about some of the development projects that have went on. And Mayor Lenkowitz and myself both had the privilege to attend the VEX grand opening ribbon cutting, which exceeded any expectations. When they said they would bring people from all over the state, they weren't kidding. I never saw so many pickup trucks in one place in my life. And, and also the distribution center at Swans, which was a big event. It's gratifying to sit up here and hear these projects come to us and work through the whole planning, the development, the groundbreaking to the ribbon cutting. And I kind of think, think things are kind of slowing down and finishing up. But I was out by K-State Salina and another huge project is just getting under construction, the K-Air's Pure Imagination Center, which it will be a building unlike anything we've ever seen. So progress keeps happening in Salina.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just in case no one was aware of that, we have a meet and greet for potential city managers this evening at 5:30 to 7:30. Is that correct? You should know. At the Watson Room in Seifel Theater, our interim city manager, Jacob Wood, is one of those three finalists. So if you don't know Jacob and you'd like to meet the other two, you're welcome to show up and, and get to know him a little bit. And I said that because if we don't hurry up, he's going to be leaving us before 5:30. So.
Thank you. Well, with that, that brings us to Citizens Forum. Please keep your comments within the three-minute time constraints. And again, let's keep it cordial, please. And thank you.
Rosemary My, Salina, Kansas. The Granny Brigade would like to invite the mayor and you commissioners and the citizens of Salina to our next meeting, which is Tuesday, August the 19th at 7:00 p.m. at the Carver Center. And our guest speakers this month will be four of our nonprofit organizations that responded to our other entities that we invited. And four of them responded. And they are Salina Shares with Debbie Rivers, Birthright with Brendan Miller, Salina Senior Center with Rosie Walters, and Salina Grace and Rescue Mission with Chad Young. We'd like everybody to come out, get informed on what these organizations do for our community and what kind of help that they need from our community to keep these services going. And I, we appreciate all of you. And be sure and come out next week, Tuesday at 7 o'clock at the Carver Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we discussed Salina Grace earlier and our funding and what they do. I follow the news around the state. And Salina, as far as having this multi-use center that brings all the services to one place, we are ahead of the game. Wichita is just now getting it going, spending millions of dollars. And this has spun up and it, it's just ahead of its time. And they're doing a great job.
If there's no one else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move for adjournment.
Second.
In favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.